Mr. Pean, it's ready.
(laughing).
You ready on the left? There you go. Ready on the right?
I'm ready.
All right, so after order at seven o'clock to start with the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up we have visitor citizen forum, seven person big point council, they stripped to the council. And by the way, um, the state legislature just changed the law and said that every city now must have a visitor citizen forum. Before you didn't have to do it, um, they just changed it. We always do it, but that's not a state law, so. Um, did you want to douche yourself?
Yes, please. Um, you can leave, council. My name is Lee Collins and I am the new municipal manager for public services out of our Louisville office. Um, currently you guys have Mr. Rick Urbans who is your contact, um, but because of the lakes management acquisition, we have a new business unit in this area and so we are officeing out of Lewisville, right up to the Camel on the landfill. And so I'm going to be the municipal manager for this territory. So I just wanted to come say hello and that's pretty much it and thank you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think our contract is, uh, like January of 20?
It is, yes.
It's in the fall we're gonna have our little party. No? Okay, all right, next up we have the consent agenda, all the items on the consent agenda considered, so explanatory will be enacted with one motion. So these are the minutes of our May ninth or our May twenty-second offsite. Anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I'll make a motion for the minutes.
Uh, motion to clear the consent agenda. I dare us to have the second, all is in favor. All right, thank you. All right, moving on. All right, next up we have the regular agenda. I have one presentation by Patterson Professional Services on the status of water and wastewater systems. Mark Patterson is here, he is our operator. Under his contract once a year, Mark, is to give the council an update on all things, utilities, compliance, inspections, recommendations, um, and Mark is comfortable?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, didn't really require anything, but, uh, the city of Lake or the town of Lake and villages, y'all are a unicorn as far as operational cities are concerned. Um, first off, you're 100% uh, it's all homes, there's no businesses, there's, it's pure residential. Um, due to the lot size, you're extreme consumers of water. Um, the TCQ has a rule that you have to have to produce 26 gallons of water per connection out of your well, per, per, 26 gallons per connection per minute out of your well. And, uh, most little cities if struggle to do that and they have massive overages of water, y'all can do that and on a hot dry summer, y'all will have to contain water because of the large amount of irrigation you get. Um, most cities buy an asset, say, let's say a pump station, and they go and they borrow the money and they spend a million dollars on this pump station. And they're real proud of it and they point at it and they say, oh, look there, a pump station. And then it starts to deteriorate, 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 and then finally it falls apart and they go borrow another million dollars and rebuild their pump station. And then they go in and say, hey, look, look at us, we, we redid this and did real good. Y'all don't do that, y'all do it a far better way. Y'all continually change pieces out, uh, tank here, a pump there, a lift station here, a blower there, and, uh, you maintain where as other cities go up and down and up and down, you know, this, this pump station's down here in this low spot and it's not operating very well and they spend the money against up here, it's great. Y'all do it for even keel pain. When you see that, uh, the hour of getting up on this machinery or you see that it's starting to come weak, y'all go ahead and switch it out then and that's a much better way to do it. And, uh, y'all, y'all can be an example to other places in the way y'all do that. As far as, uh, water and wastewater specific, uh, of course, y'all have limited growth because you have limited number of lots that are available at this point, so we don't really have any issues as far as being able to produce the water necessary. Um, we did have an issue last year with the water table disvaluing and, uh, it's not that it fell faster last year than it always has, it's just it came from fruition last year. The water tables in North Texas in general are generally declining and, uh, that's had that has been going on since the nineteen fifty's deal continues on and they'll either switch off to, uh, all surface water or become much, much more, uh, dilating on our water use. But, uh, you're not in any danger, um, your wells could be lowered, uh, we, we could bring your production back up to pretty well whatever you wanted to. At some point you'll have to get well as more growth comes in, uh, a good idea would be to get away from, right now all your wells are in this one small area.
For defeating each other?
Yeah. Uh, now, but, but y'all get away with that because they're pumping out at different levels in the formation, but, uh, you really need to get away from that area, further the better. And, uh, you know, I don't know how much geology y'all study, but, uh, wells have what they call a home depression, it's like a snow cone and you're pulling out right here and the water comes down in a snow cone shape as far as filling in. People, people tend to think, and I'm wrinkled, I'm sorry, uh, people tend to think that, you know, when you go to school and they show the formations and there's this kind of rock and there's that kind of shale and then there's water and they, they show this blue line of water, that's not what's there. There's water sand there. It's just a saturated sand, some is coarser than others. And, uh, that's why it flows in this pattern like this. It was just a body of water like they show, it could just all drop down the sun, but it doesn't do that. Um, as far as, uh, is your water production, you're good, uh, new well needs to be moved away. Wastewater, it hasn't been a good year for wastewater and it's not anything that y'all have done, uh, the, uh, the plant has performed admirably, but when it rains over Thursday, there is infiltration. Y'all have less infiltration than a lot of our cities that we operate for. Um, you haven't had a problem with breaking your thumb yet, but, uh, it kind of skews the numbers. I could've brought, I could've brought you numbers and I looked at them today about where you are as far as your permit is concerned, um, when you get to seventy-five percent of your permit for a ninety day, let's say you get here three months in a row, you're supposed to start planning your next expansion in your wastewater plan. When you get to ninety percent for ninety days in a row, you're supposed to start construction of your new plant. Well, TCQ has kind of had to look the other way on all of Texas, um, these last few months because it's just raining so much, you know, we've got, well, uh, a lot of our cities in the northern east got over fourteen inches of rain just last month. That's half a year's worth of rain in one month. So, uh, that, that all skews the numbers. But to make a long story short, uh, your, your numbers are within limits. You probably, without a new development coming in, you probably gonna have to look at a new time expansion for a long time. Any particular questions y'all have about wastewater?
I have a question, sir. Sir, could you talk about our inspections the last round?
Okay. Now...
I don't need this, you know, you know, I mean, just off that a little higher than that, I mean, we're, we're good on all the...
You're, you're good on everything? The only thing they fussed at was they don't like the way you operate.
Just that.
And, uh, the typical way, and, and we, and that's what I discussed in the first, you know, that they let things get out of hand, they go hire an engineer, the engineer draws this new pump station, they go borrow a million dollars, they build this pump station in the process or so. We all just fix stuff and change stuff as it needs to be done. Well, they're not used to that, so they say, well, well, where's your engineer plans? Well, where, where did you borrow the money to do this? And they will see these things because that's the typical way it's done. So they had an issue with, uh, not having engineered plans for, and it's silly stuff. It, they want you to have an engineered plan if you change a pump out. If you change this pump out to this pump, they want you to hire an engineer to say that, yes, this pump is correct. Well, it doesn't take an engineer to do that. In their defense, the reason they do that is because they'll go into some place and they have an oil field all of a sudden there, so the water pump, because people just do silly stuff, but y'all do it right and you have all the correct equipment, it's all set up correctly, and really that's the only thing they fussed at. So that's, uh, y'all, y'all had excellent results with TCQ.
The, um, the next step, so just so everybody knows, we did, what, a year ago, call it a year, we did a well study. We paid Kelly Horn to do a study on where a well should go, how much water, and it's on the shelf. So we've already paid for that study, so we're, we're ready to simple hole in the ground. We've already got all the engineer, you know, the next, that's next up, but we did pay for that. Um, seems like the next step for us would be to re-hay the screens, because we dropped them this summer. Can you talk about that?
If you, I don't know how much y'all understand about how a well is made there. You dig a hole in the ground and let's say you dig a hole this big around them, you put casing in and you put the casing in at some point, less big around, and where you, where you encounter the water sands, you put casing that has slots in it and that's called springs. And the way, in, in between the two layers, in a water area, you put, they, we used to put pea gravel, they put some manufactured stuff now, it's long and flat, that allows the water to run through but won't, won't get stuff in the spring. And that's how you keep your sands from getting into your water. Every once in a while you'll hear about somebody's well starting to produce sand. Well, that, what that is, is where they didn't have either, the casing wasn't in the middle of the hole or they didn't have a good pack around it and it got out and, and this water is bringing the sand into the, into the hole as it comes, and you're pretty well done when that happens. So you want to get, be sure you get a good casing and good, uh, pack job when you get welded. But, uh, what, what he's, uh, what the mayor's talking about is, uh, over time the calciums and salts in the water build up on this string. It's stainless steel, but it's, it'll still build up on it over time. So at some point in time you have to consider going in and acid washing your springs. And what you do to do that is you dump a, a large amount of acid down the well, let it sit, eat the calcium and salt off, and then you have to flush it. The negative side of it is it turns a lot of stuff in the formation loose, which it, it opens up where the water will come into your formation better, or coming from the formation into your well better. The negative side of it is, uh, sometimes you have to flush your well for weeks or maybe a month before it completely clears up. So you have to be, of course y'all have three wells, so you're, you're somewhat protected in that, but you have to be kind of careful what time of year you do it, you can't do it in a high cruise time and, uh, but that is something that you probably should consider.
You don't actually have to pull the well then?
Oh, that, you do that.
Do you have to pull the well? Okay. To a city for the well then?
Yeah.
Or the mower, I should say.
Well, you, you don't have, I don't guess you would have to pull the well, but generally it's done when you pull the well. And also another action that they do indeed is they'll run a brush down there and then they'll scrub the brush water, get the acid down it.
Didn't you just did that crumb? No, ponder, what did you just?
Uh, we did it this year and, oh, we did one of our wells in, uh, in a field of brown roads over in, uh, Hazel, and, uh, it took it, oh, I, I bet it took a month for it to fully clear up.
Did you, did you get output?
Yeah, yeah, it increased that one, yes.
And, and that's an operation that Patterson can do?
No, that's an operation a well service can do.
Okay, so we, we gotta use Mark again?
Yeah, or some other well service, yes.
Okay.
You know roughly, how much it costs?
Uh, depending on size of well, volume, um...
Like ten to twenty? I mean, it's not a hundred thousand.
Mine's only six hundred bucks, mine's a smaller.
Oh, okay, so that's...
So, so yours should be maybe fifteen hundred, two thousand.
Same position as the ton, not as much as the minor.
Right.
Is there a recommended timeframe to do that? What does it, what, where?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a hundred.
No, I meant how often, like years? Like if you do it, if you do it now, how long before you've got to do it again?
Well, how, well, wells...
The big well is, uh, in two thousand and three. That's the new one.
So that's, uh, nine, uh, it's nineteen sixteen years old, so...
That's the newest one, yeah.
If you did it now, maybe you'd probably get another fifteen, sixteen years. Which it, it's not like, it's not like your well is stopped off now, right? And then another thing you can do in rehabbing your wells is, is, uh, there's, as the water table drops, people tend to, and we did this this year, we dropped our pump. Well, every time you drop that pump, it has more head pressure against it because it's pumping, it was pumping water from here to the surface, now it's pumping water from here to the surface. Same size pump, same size motor, more head, less production. So at some point you have to up the horsepower in the production ability of your pump to get it back to where it was originally. Doesn't mean the water's running in your well any slower. So the, the well, when it was up here, was making a hundred gallons a minute. Well, now we've dropped it down here, it's only making sixty-five gallons a minute. Doesn't mean your well isn't capable of making a hundred gallons still, you just don't have the horsepower to get to the water that far. So as you lower it down, you end up at some point having to make a decision, hey, we need a bigger motor, bigger pump to get back where we were originally. The ori, the original ability of your well is designed, when they dig your well, they do a thirty-six hour pump test. And so what they'll do is they'll, they'll run the, uh, well thirty-six hours straight and by every hour they're coming down, measuring the drawdown of the well, in other words, the water table dropping in the well. And they can run a calculation and say, okay, this well is capable of running a hundred gallons a minute forever, or this well is capable of making three hundred gallons a minute, or if the, the drawdown is extreme, oh no, this wasn't a very good well, you got a twenty-five gallon in your well. And that's, that's how they determine that, and then your pumps are kind of wedged into that area of pumping from now on. If you, and we have tried this in a couple of places, what we really needed for water, and we put a bigger pump in the well, it just wasn't able to make that capacity. Sometimes it's somewhat successful, but if you ever put more pressure on them, it doesn't end well.
I have a couple of questions about the sewer plant. Okay? Um, so some of the improvements I think we talked about, is the ejector system rebuilt? Is that really back online with the polymer?
Patterson's brought the new system down today.
So that should solve that issue?
Yes.
Um, so as far as, uh, the sewer plant goes, I don't remember anything in the inspection. Do you remember it? I don't remember anything there.
You have a list, no, I'm there.
The only other recommendation I think we've talked about in the past would be, uh, two things, uh, the fine bar screen, we still think that's a good idea, trying to, I don't think our bar screen accomplished too much benefit, right?
Not, not a lot.
I think that's what the TCQ was saying, right?
Right. And, and what he's talking about is, is as the wastewater enters the wastewater plant, it is screened off, in other words, it's to keep larger pieces from coming through. You'd be surprised what comes to the sewer line. We get, uh, tennis balls, softballs, stuff that you would not expect to be able to get into the sewer line, we get them out all the time. But in a grease ball, say this big around gets in there, it takes hundreds of hours of air or blower running for enough bacteria, you know, bacterias are, you put a billion in on the end of a pencil. It takes hundreds of hours worth of air to keep these bacteria hyped up to eat this ball, whereas if you have the physical ability to remove it, put it in the trash, send it to the landfill, you save that work. So let's say Louisville, for example, their wastewater plant, they, they start at big stuff and their springs are, are in succession, they start at big stuff and then they work their way down, and the last spring will get stuff smaller than a grain of corn in. And so it's just water, it's all their treat, so they're not having to create any of those solids that come in, and makes it a lot better, it's a lot more efficient and that would increase the efficiency.
I think our bar screens are like two inches apart.
Yeah, yeah, yours are to keep baseballs out of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so one last question on the wastewater. Um, what was the one measurement we thought we were going to have to keep, travel to phosphates or?
So every time you renew your permit, they turn the screws on, you just look at it. Permit comes up in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, I'm not sure of y'all's identity, so, as you get bigger and as they continually turn these screws, phosphorus will be the next limit that's up there. Y'all have, right now you have, uh, BOD or C, y'all have CBOD, which is carbonation, carbonated biochemical oxygen, TSS, which is total settled, settleable solids in a moment. Now, when you get into, uh, phosphorus, it, it's a little more tricky to get rid of. You can't remove phosphorus from wastewater very easily. You put alum in it and you bind it to the sludge and it weighs it down and you, and you remove it when you remove the sludge. That is pretty well the way everybody does it. The negative of that is if you ever get anything that upsets your plant at all and your sludge gets started up in your water at all, you get a real high phosphorus count. So generally what happens when you go into phosphorus counts is you, uh, you add polymer, I mean, you add alum to bind it to your sludge and then you filter your water as it's going out. And, uh, we don't have the filtering capacity or capability in time to have that filtered out. And, and that's not a given. They have a indefinite, the TCQ, when they model this stuff, they look at a whole bunch of different things, and y'all don't think of the lake, and even though you may not get any bigger, the overall looting of the lake could have gotten bigger, probably did get bigger with all the housing that's been built around it. And so they may become more protective of the water, which would make them add something to you even though nothing has really changed here. So that, don't be surprised if it does change because they take things into, into context that really didn't even come from you.
How far in the news? In October, June, July?
Okay. Be careful.
Careful, you know.
On the, uh, cleaning the screens, do you have a feel for what, how much extra capacity that'll use? Does it vary widely or do you get an average?
Well, you're, you're not gonna, you're never gonna, you're, you started out at, at this capacity and you've dropped down a little bit, at the very best you're gonna get back up to that capacity. You're, you're never gonna, you're never gonna improve your well, but you might...
Will it back up before we grapple well?
No, 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 your, your water level's not gonna come back up. Your ability of the water to run in the well faster will come back up.
Right. How much more will that give us after putting in the screen?
Well, it's crap shoot because if I could go down there and look at the screen and say, yeah, it's thirty percent blocked, but it's really just kind of an experience, goosebump feeling and, uh, looking at your chemical composition of your water. Uh, but we do have a lot of soft, much calcium in this water around here, so it, it does go up very well.
So it generally does produce...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's generally worth doing, yes, it generally does increase the ability of water.
No, I think for us it's kind of the last economical option before you wow. It's kind of, we've done everything we can do.
Yeah. And, and it's just, it's just basic calcium content.
Yeah. And, uh, lastly, Mark, Rocky Point? Seems like, uh, there is, well, there we switched it. I think the problem was we switched to gas coordination and didn't tell them, so we upgraded the system.
Yeah, they, they weren't particularly appreciative of, we upgraded and we didn't answer the permission to upgrade and, uh, and they weren't particularly pleased with that, but, uh, if that's the worst one, they can track us about, that's not really that bad. Um, we replaced a lot of lines up there. The, if you went over there and went in the building when they first got it, you looked at it now, it's, you went back, it's the same place. I mean, um, it was rodent infested, it was, it was not a good place to be when that. It's a very clean, nice, uh, efficient looking pump right now.
Good question.
Oh, again, they fussed at this because, uh, we, they said, we, the original tank over there was a plastic tank. And you can't have a plastic tank, you can't have a clear plastic tank or a white plastic tank because ultraviolet light shines through, ultraviolet light kills chlorine and ultraviolet light grows algae. So you can't have that because it's trying to kill your chlorine and grow algae inside your tank. But fussed at is, fussed at, you've got to change that tank, you've got to change that tank, you've got to change that tank, change the tank. I said, you didn't ask, this you changed the tank?
It is the customer.
First complaining?
No, no, she says she will be.
I think y'all were, I was, that's the guy for you.
Yeah, that's...
President Kennedy said that.
Yeah, that's, that's big deal.
Yeah, big deal. You're on.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, we, we at Patterson, uh, want to thank y'all, y'all have been customer providers for a long time now. Then it was just out of high school we started to hear about this and, uh, but, uh, we're very happy with y'all and hope y'all happy with our service.
Very, yeah, we are. Thanks, Mark. All right. Okay, next up we have consideration, uh, by the ways to the municipal development district board. All right, so we, uh, we have a couple vacancies on the board. Um, we have, uh, three vacancies, uh, no, two vacancies. We have two vacancies, uh, I put the mayor's letter asking people if they would volunteer, we had two people volunteer to be on the, uh, board. Uh, we had Larry King and, um, we had Robin, Robin West, uh, and they've expressed interest and... Any questions? So you, I think that'd be terrific, both of them. That'd be really good. Larry, Larry is somebody I, you know, I've known a lot of a long time. I, Larry's someone I meet with about every quarter. Larry's a CPA, financial guru and, uh, Larry's my sounding board and I talk about finances, so you don't want to sit in on one of our practice unless you really want to work a lot of accounting, it's technical stuff when we get together.
He's got quite a resume, quite a resume, yeah.
And he's, uh, quite a guy, yes. Yeah. So, and I think that, you know, the great thing about the NBD is, you know, we've got, uh, Eric's on the NBD, Daryl, I've been on the NBD, and that's, um, the NBD is quite a, quite a grounds for, uh, the NBD to hold, so. Linda, any comments?
No, I'm ready to get the board going and...
Rock on, okay.
Start rocking along.
Um, they have to be their budget this month, so they're gonna need a couple of weeks, so, um, it's pretty important they get, get all hands on deck, their budget be a couple weeks. Okay, they have a motion?
I want to approve, point, I mean, Mr. Pang and Mrs. West.
Okay. Wow.
And we, we would also need reappointments of the positions that are terminating. That would be in the lab itself.
Oh, I have to appoint all of it. Dave, you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay, so motion to appoint Linda Lavitt.
Reappoint.
Reappoint Linda Lavitt, reappoint Dave. Reappoint Linda Louden, reappoint Dave Van Chelter and reappoint Linda. So is your motion to reappoint Linda Louden and Vanessa?
Yeah.
And to re, and to appoint Vanessa, I think?
Yeah, that's serious. Yeah, that was your... Okay, so I have that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Oh, was it...
You should motion.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think we need that one written down.
Shoot.
Okay.
Next time.
Appreciate you stepping in here, surely not. Okay, next up, we have the municipal court of record. This we've talked about several iterations. This one, it's already been to the attorney, attorney's approved it, it's been to the municipal court judge, he has approved it. I'm not getting over the specifics about the municipal court of record, it's just another piece of progress for the city. The city's, you have to reach this point, so we're at 20 now and it's just a natural progression to have a court of record.
So we need to make a motion, right?
Yes, this is on, yes.
I'll make a motion to become a municipal court of record. Or to run, or just to...
Or just to approve. Okay, all right, so I have a motion to approve the municipal court of record ordinance. Who has the second policy favor? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have a discussion only item. This is something that I wanted to put on, this is our utility policies ordinance, kind of govern, you know, when you get water and sewer kind of rules, the water and sewer. And the issue that I wanted to bring up is that in the near future, we're going to have, it's very likely, I've seen some plans where we're going to have some people building a house and a guest house. And you are allowed to have two houses in the shores. So you can have two separate houses on a block, that's permitted, and it's permitted on zoning, and you can have that. And this is different than, than like a garage apartment or, you know, this is literally a second structure, like 3,000 square foot of guest house. And what I want to clarify is, at some threshold point, you need to get another water tap, sewer tap. That's a house. As a, you can't tie that all together, we call that one, you know, one garbage can, one water tap. That's different. So this is just a discussion item, but the reason why it's there would be to say something like, if you're gonna build another separate thing, it's more than 1,000 square feet. 1,000 square, we have, smallest house in Lincolnburg is over here, it's 990 square feet. That's the smallest house we have in the city. So the idea would be to capture this notion that if you build a second house, it's, it's obviously going to have second building permits and all that kind of stuff. That, that we've got covered. But we don't have the utility squared away. And so it seems like you should, just like any other house, you have to have a water tap that has your own sewer line, you know, you...